Five thousand, two hundred and fifty-five dollars for supercharged spending. Nine hundred and seventy-dollar student, only estimated value of eight thousand five hundred twenty-two dollars. Six flags, eighty-three per student. This includes a meal, snack, and a lot of drinks. That'll cost one two thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. Six flags, fees, and about fifty bucks. Meals, some from, I don't know, Safe Start or another from, of ten, where each student has lunch and dinners. Hopefully, we find a hotel that has free breakfast, that's going to be approximately one thousand three hundred dollars. The hotel estimated is going to be two thousand eight hundred eighty dollars for two nights, and the total of that can be four two thousand two hundred and sixty-four dollars. And I found it with eleven thousand eight hundred ten, and we have, we passed it off as that being standard, some other about twenty-five hundred, but I'll just get there.
Do you have a number of students that are interested or from joining the V I O program?
Yeah, we've got the full five hundred, yeah, yeah, twenty-three people, ten, seven.
Oh, well.
I think it's twenty-six.
Twenty-five. Oh, fantastic.
That's brilliant.
Well, while some of those were really, some were maybe, but we're lumping them in and, um, keep the talking to us.
So, do you have any questions from the board?
Do you have your approval?
Yeah. So, we're good. So, do you need approval?
Yeah, yeah.
I'm going to motion to approve the six slides that was presented.
Thank you, that's been done, and your first question number? Okay, none, I will be table six, five, saying aye. Those, sentences, and then, okay, it's done.
You have your time. Yes, Chief Morris is going to be presenting an S R O proposal, which is partially grant funded, something like the other that's one and a half. It's a three-year program. Chief?
How's everybody tonight? Approach? I don't know if I have your face. Most of that is informational about the S R O, guidance principles, and memorandums of understanding. But I guess, I guess the real question is, does the board entertain bringing back the S R O program? Like, they stand up here in double and do backflips, but I guess, you know, if you're not interested, if you aren't, it's, it's a meeting here. We have retained a COPS grant through U S D O J, and it's maximum of one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars. And it's a three-year grant where seventy-five percent is funded in the first year, fifty percent is funded in the second year, and twenty-five percent is funded in the third year. The remaining percentages would be split between the town and the school, if agreed upon. I guess once you see a number, you really can't unsee it, so I would be reluctant to put a number there as far as wages are concerned, because I'm not sure if it's going to be a seasoned officer. I certainly wouldn't put a brand-new officer in as a school resource officer. So, I used a mid-level approach anyway, as a number to give you a basis. So, in year one, the split for benefits and salary would be roughly eighteen thousand dollars, almost nineteen thousand dollars, for the town and the school. Year two, so it would be a thirty-one thousand dollar for each, for town and the school. It's sixty-three thousand, but thirty-one is the split. And then in year three, it would be ninety-one thousand, year forty-five thousand on each, the town and the schools have. So, with that being said, I think having a memorandum of understanding is pretty critical here to define the roles for both the school and the town. I'm not sure if that was even done prior, but to clearly define those roles is really important. And that means, you know, when, when, when an officer is going to be here, hours, health, one size, maybe with extrapricular staff. We are a human shot, but I think writing it into the job description would give them the flexibility. And different examples of activities that the S R O would perform, because we all know the obvious. It's a, it's a deterrent, potentially for a bad situation. Would it stop a bad situation? No, but it definitely would mitigate, you know, some of the potential for bad things to happen. I think recently, most of you or some of you have seen a lot of people to spend them. We've had, we have a lot of people that come through this town on a yearly basis, and you don't know what you're going to get, but that, that's the obvious reason. And I have two words written on the cover of my folder, and it's "Evolve Texas." We've seen a lot, and I think we've become desensitized, and I don't think we can have it happen in our backyard. That, that case got it, and I thought, if I could, if I could do something, or if I can make a difference where I live, if I can control some of that, then I'm going to do it. And I applied for a grant, and we got, we got it. Three towns, two cities, one town got this grant from Mantra, three of them. So, we're very proud of that. But some of the roles and responsibilities other than the obvious, that officer can handle requests for calls for service in and around the school. They conduct comprehensive safety and security assessments. They assist with emergency management planning. They could develop and implement safety plans and strategies. They could respond to obviously unoperized persons on school property, and build relationships with juvenile justice partners, and help connect with these services. Just so you know, the time limit that we're on, when we receive the, the award, we have forty-five days to accept. We're on date curve right now, so I have, in twelve days, I have to respond either with a yes or a no. I hate to, I hate to turn it down, but that's where we're at. Obviously, there's a lot of questions you may have. We could try to answer those. If I don't have any answer, I can go back to you, but I know this is Deputy Chief Littimlin. He's, he's, he's been around about the same amount of times I have. We've seen a lot, and we really think this is an important initiative for the town, for school, for our kids.
How do you see this starting, when you get this grant? Does it, does it start in January, or what is the process for getting?
There's, there's a five-year window in which we have to open that. So, they understand that you have, you have recruitment and training that needs to happen.
Municipal budgeting, we can't do anything until we've been.
Municipal budgeting, school budgeting, so if, if we could work this out, I would anticipate September of twenty twenty-three.
Now, if we agree, yes, this is great, let's do it, let's put it on the warrant, and the voters voted down. And we can flip that out again with that.
I suspect so, yeah.
We don't have something in there, but because it's municipal, but after that.
Right, I think, and obviously, this is.
Not that that happened, I know it's very, very well received last time, the last time we voted in the S R O originally. After that, it just went in the budget for the first year, it was almost an unanimous vote. It was a separate warrant article when we first did that.
I don't think I have a separate warrant article, but I know it was always in the budget.
At one point, it was a separate warrant article, and then, Judy, yeah, it was contentious in the beginning because of money, but it was an overwhelming support of that community.
I think as part of this grant, too, the M O U is, is a critical piece.
Yeah.
And it, and it needs to be well-defined. As a matter of fact, as part of the grant requirement, we, we have to put one forward. So, I, I just think that, and having input from the, a school, at least part of it, even from the community is, is, is important.
Is there any post-rent requirement, is it a three-year grant? Is there, would it be required to keep it for?
You have to retain it for a fourth year.
Or it's just one more year after the grant?
Yeah.
At a hundred percent, obviously.
Yes.
What is the history of the S R O? There was one here?
We had one here, and, and, and he was always great, he was fantastic, he was knocking really low on the kids, kind of staffed with anybody. He was, he was awesome. Lincoln's previous chief, not so much, and that's a problem for them. And I wish I could say no without getting tell whether to see the guns or, or what, but we could read the, the court reports and file that ourselves. He was, it was just not, the problem was there, and that's. Personality issue.
A conflict in that, and that's what, that did up the S R O to contact nothing anymore, either?
It was, the, the school couldn't do it anymore, but the chief, that Lincoln had, there was no way the school could have kept going like that. It was, you know, I mean, it was, it was not easy to work with.
So, definitely feel you could eliminate a lot of those problems with.
Yeah, oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
To find them on you.
You think that, would you try to place some, sort of like, I'm all for it. I think a big thing though is like, especially with the kids, pretty cool that they drive to school and they get to meet you guys on a daily basis, you know? Like, that's the only thing I would like to see every day. It's like, if you brought somebody as a staff into the P D, I'd almost rather see somebody that you already have that's like, connected and friendly with the children and part of the community. Be, like, kind of take on a staff role, whether if there's anybody. Have, have you had guys show interest in being like?
I, I do believe I had interest, but in, in our C B A states that pre-transfers of promotions has to be posted by, through the union, so they would have first shot at it. And obviously, if we didn't have anybody, have somebody that, who wants to qualify or who weren't the right personality, that's a crucial fit. This isn't a punishment. We're not going to take somebody and stick them in the school, and that's a punishment for them. It's going to be somebody who loves the, in that environment. And, and I will even open that up to a selection committee of residents and, and school administration to help make the right fit, who's the right fit. We had Jonah Luke getting here before Will, and then we had Jose Pachino here as the first school resource officer.
He would stand out by the school, everyone would go to him, just so far, we can add, you know, Peter stands to pass it. Yeah.
I mean, what, what could really be the downside of, side of this? Is there a downside?
I don't see.
I don't see what?
I don't see the downside.
I don't see a downside.
I mean, that's pretty true, why would you save what?
I agree.
Even at a hundred percent, it's pretty, if you save one life, it's worth anything.
You know, I, I know during the Alstring, Keith Cashman from Frankonia was presenting, he's, he's a great guy. Let's face it, I might have one or two on, maybe. We have a lot of land territories, so if something bad happens, we, we will be here, and as Mac said, like the hounds, hell are coming, we are coming. But we could mitigate that with somebody here already.
It's funny that Matt was, but it's, it's, I remember with Will, we talked to Will, I was here all the time, with, with his school. A lot of kids came to him with concerns and questions, and got help, and there were some pretty major issues. Man, somebody mine was as well. He was definitely, he was a perfect thing, he was definitely competent on the kid in school, and helped a lot of kids. They had nothing to do with any kind of crime or anything, or any violent, well, exterior violence, it was, it was, you know, he was, that's a review.
And we're not coming in to take over, we're, we're not coming in to be, you know, from a part of punishment. That's not the role, the role is to be a resource, whatever that may be, for crime victims, for, for children who need, or showing needed services, or whatever it may be, that's, that's the role. We're not here to take over anything, you know, it's, and, and to build relationships, obviously, with the community and, and to make that, bridge that gap. So, if somebody does have a problem, they don't feel, they have somebody that they go to, and they feel that, they feel safe.
Are there anything from an administration point of view that, that you're worried? I mean, obviously, they're going to have the housing, they're going to have the room, and stuff like that, that's all easy stuff, but are there any concerns?
No concerns. I mean, we, I've been here when they've had the S R O, and it was excellent. I mean, very supportive, helped with the, the court system, helped with the students and supported them, and, and was actually great with, with being proactive.
Yes.
Was able to be proactive, and, and communicate with the community prior to anything happening.
I mean, we pay all this money, that, all the glass and all this other stuff, but it's priceless to have an officer, pricey. Do you need a motion?
Yes, for the motion.
So.
What would be the sentence, Dan?
There's a twenty-five, he still has a lot of.
I mean, I could make motion, and then you guys go on, except for, I just want to just, just to.
Very timely that you.
I went, I just, I grabbed my son helping school the other night, and he said, we brought up Evolve, as we're on our road, and he said, we're really fortunate that Littlewood hasn't had something like that happen yet. And it shocked me when he said that, he said, if I could really save the world, what would you have to my school? I think he felt really good, thank you, guys, and, yeah, still this night.
So, I'll, I'll make a motion to, I don't know exactly how to word it, to authorize Chief Morris to accept the.
The first M O U in the town, question.
The C O P grant, for a school resource officer.
But can we add the emphasis to collaboration for the school to enter the M O, enter the M O U?
I think that's what we're doing.
The town of Lincoln, for an S R O, right? So, we don't require the chief, but this, but this, the administration to enter into an M O U, the town of Lincoln, for an S R O, for the school.
Okay, I'll second.
Over.
All right. So, the motion is to authorize the administration to enter into an M O U, with the town of Lincoln, and the police department regarding, if you know, an S R O. And certainly, we can't fund it for us. And before we, before, we say, um, so I'm adding it up, it's about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars of resources orders. Half of that's coming from our budget, and half of that's coming from the town of Lincoln, yes, just.
Please go back a bit.
And so, that, so, so that's going to have to be something that is decided by.
We talked about it a little bit in town, kind of, it could be around forty, but the school is on it.
Right.
But we have to, we have some of our own, so, obviously.
Right, that's a, that's a good point. You know, again, numbers, you can't unsee, but basically, just to get the point across, but there will be some of us in which I.
Vacation weeks, summer months, summer, summer, yeah. And it'll be a challenge, but they, he should get, will be a common unit for, under our chance to set it.
It's a contracted service for us.
Correct.
So, the board want to take a vote on that?
Yeah, I, there's a vote of the seven. All those in favor, so you can probably say aye. Nay, sentences, and I hope you're good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for everything, I do.
Appreciate it.
It's, it's been busy lately.
I, I know, yes.
We're a little tired, but that's okay.
Thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much.
Um, no, I just understand, I'm not going to respond to all that, but it's, 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 but reminder that the, in, in your pack that you have, on local educational services, that news, news server that came through. You have the Lindbergh News Twitter that comes out quarterly. And you also have the Calibered Activities, the American Education Weekly Flyer, and just reminder that the Book Fair is also happening next week, this, this week. And don't forget to drop off dessert, mom. Okay, that's all I have.
Oh, that was.
That was important.
That was important, so, so, yeah.
Okay. Okay, well, Judy's passing those out. Okay, first of all, just want a couple reminders, the budget binders, we will email you all when they are ready, maybe next week. But our first budget meeting is, is December seventh, and so it's, it's not the week we get back from Thanksgiving, because that's still November, it's a fine week. On Monday, we had a visit from the Department of Education, federal compliance, we had a federal compliance audit, so they've been going out to every school district in the state, anyone that gets federal grants. Just to go through and make sure, there's a lot of, I mean, we have that big policy D A F regarding federal grants and procurement procedures, time and effort reporting. When we talk about the project later for the middle high school H VAC, since we're using E S R funds, it's funded by grants, there's a lot of things we have to put in our bids and our contracts. So, they just came in to do.
You hit the best, I mean, pretty rigorous to do.
Yeah, well, it wasn't as bad as I thought. You know, they gave us, they gave us some, they went through all of our grants last year, because it's all in the V O E system, and I had a list of, a page, page and a half worth of activities. So, I had to gather that, so they could see, you know, if it was someone that's paid through a grant, we, either there's a timesheet, or there's, there's a certification report we have to do. Or if it's something like a computer or something that we had a purchase order, and on the purchase order it said certain thing, you know, so they're just checking all of that. So, I mean, I was surprised they were only here for two hours, they had, they had kind of earmarked two days. And I did have to send them additional stuff, but.
That's a lot.
Yeah, I mean, there's going to be some things that I know we have to tighten up, you know, because they, so, we have to put some things on our timesheets, we have to, you know, and that's fine, that's, that's fine. You know, we'd rather have them come and do that now, rather than take money away from us later on, because that's, that's what would happen. That's why I send out the emails and do the things for the staff, like, why did she ask me for that? Okay, the last thing I want to do is education funding, and I told you how to do that. There is a big, bigger packet in your packet that goes over education funding, and I was originally going to go through that, but what I did is I took a snapshot of the numbers for Lincoln and Woodstock. Because it's a huge spreadsheet. But kind of going with, I mean, if you look at this packet, you know, they, they just, the first page, and again, this was something that I attended back in October. It just talks about all of the revenues and expenditures of the school districts throughout the state. And then they talk about different state aid, like, we get special education aid, or you speak catastrophic aid, there's tuition and transportation aid we get for vocational education. There's building aid, there's public school infrastructure fund, we've, we've accessed that before. So, there's a whole bunch of state monies. Then they talk about how the education trust fund is funded, and the biggest piece of that is through the statewide education copy tax, which comes from each town. They list a whole bunch of other grants that we get, that, that was kind of what they were just auditing. And then they, page six is, is the key page, because page six puts these spreadsheets into words. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna, so I did, I pulled out Lincoln and Woodstock's numbers. Now, these were from last year, so I think I had mentioned at the last meeting that Lincoln, and we're going to see in tax rate setting, that Lincoln actually got a grant this year for education funding. And they did, and you, and if you saw the Lincoln tax rate, it actually went down, at least the education piece of it. And you, and if you saw the Lincoln tax rate, it actually went down, at least the education piece of it. And actually, the, for the Woodstock tax rate, the education piece of it went down. It was a one-time relief grant. Maybe not the relief, it was a one-time swept reduction, hold harmless grant.
There you go.
Okay, so it's, it's confusing, but it's really not. So when you, again, adequacy, it's based on, so the, the base adequacy. So there's base adequacy for each town that's your left, the furthest column on the left. So that is, there's a figure, $3,786.66 that the state has calculated as the base adequacy for an adequate education in the state of New Hampshire. And they take your ADM, your average annual membership for either Lincoln or Woodstock, multiply that by your base adequacy to get your base adequacy cost. But, but there's other things that they add in to that adequacy. So they give you differentiated aid. So they give you some differentiated aid for free and reduced numbers. So if your free and reduced numbers are a certain percentage, they'll give you some additional ADM and some additional monies for that. They give you, and then because the last couple of years, because of COVID, because everyone was free, they had to go back and adjust numbers because their free and reduced numbers haven't been totally accurate. So there's been all this other differentiated aid for free and reduce. You also get some additional aid for special ed students. So they add that in. So they look at your ADM for special ed students, they add that into your base adequacy. Also for ELL or English language learners, um, they give you some differentiated aid for that. And they also give you some aid for third grade reading, which is, third graders that test below proficient in third grade reading. So they give you any of the students that might have that, they give you some differentiated aid for that. So you take all that together, and you get for each town, the total calculated cost of adequate education. So for Lincoln, it's 598,000, for Woodstock, it's 714 or 715,000. Then they look at the statewide education property tax for each town. And what the statewide education property tax is, how much can each town raise based on the state education tax rate? So they take the state education tax rate that they have, that everyone has, and applies it against your property valuation. And before this year, so they would just, they would take that statewide education property tax, the ability that your town has to raise it, compare it against your cost of inadequate education. And in Lincoln's case, the statewide education property tax, what they can raise is higher than the cost of inadequate education. So Lincoln has never received a grant. They don't need it based on this formula. For Woodstock, they, again, their cost of inadequate education here was 715,000. Based on the state education property tax, they could only raise 363,000. So Woodstock would get a grant because what they can raise is less than what the town, the state is saying is the cost of inadequate education. But this year, there were additional, a couple of things happened. The state education property tax, the state reduced that tax rate. One-time reduction in that tax rate. So like Lincoln, who would, would raise more, and every town that would raise more because that rate was higher, they reduced that this year. And to make up for that difference, they gave everyone a grant. So that's just to confuse everyone.
Right.
So, anyway, so you have your, normally you have your adequate education grant. And then the next line over, the relief aid grant. Now, that relief aid grant, Lincoln didn't get any, Woodstock did. And you can see on page six, the definition of relief aid, but it's based on free and reduced numbers. And if your number is between 150 to 600, you get so much, this is a formula. Okay? So, um, let me try to see these. Anyway, so Woodstock got some relief aid, Lincoln did not. If you flip over to the next side, the extraordinary grant. Um, we talked about this earlier in the year. Um, and this was a last minute change to the adequacy formula this year. But with this grant, again, that was based on free and reduced numbers, but also property valuation. Anytime you throw property valuation in there, chances are Lincoln's not going to get anything. Lincoln did not get any of that extraordinary grant. Woodstock got $9,000 in that. So your preliminary grant is the total of your adequate education grant on the first page, the relief aid grant, and your extraordinary grant. So for Lincoln, that would be zero. Because it didn't, again, in that, they weren't getting any adequate education grant based on the adequacy and the statewide property tax. Woodstock got a little piece of everything, so their original preliminary grant was 393,000. But again, then they had to go back because the statewide property tax rate reduced and they wanted each town to be able to, the statewide property tax is very confusing because it's a statewide property tax rate, but it's raised locally and it stays locally. Okay? But they said, well, every town should get that amount of money if the rate was higher. So they made up that difference in a grant. That's why Lincoln got a grant. That's why every town in the state got a grant. And it was called the swept reduction, hold harmless. It's a one-year thing, one-year grant. And you can see that Lincoln got 527,000. Actually, Woodstock really didn't, but they did because if you go back, they did because they, they're, because the other number was lower. So they received a bigger grant to begin with because the other number was lower. So in the end, when you look at adequacy, your adequacy grant, which is made up of now, including that hold harmless, Lincoln got 527,000 of an actual grant that they received from the state. And Woodstock got 497,000 of an actual grant. Usually they show adequacy grant and swept grant. At the end, they call the swept a grant, but it's not really a grant because it's raised and stays locally. So if any of that makes any sense to you. It's the same formula, but they added it. So the things that are going to go away is this swept reduction, hold harmless. Lincoln will not get a grant again. Woodstock most likely will continue to get a grant.
The education tax.
Yes. There was a one-time reduction. I'm not really sure why there was a reduction. I think the state had some additional monies. I'm not a hundred percent sure. I think that's been here. So, but again, you will see in the Lincoln and Woodstock tax rates, when I usually put that information in your budget binders, that both towns are reduction in their state education tax rate piece of the tax.
Right, yeah, protection.
Yeah, because next year now it's going to go back up. And people won't remember that it reduced this year.
So these though aren't stuff like this, with rate setting and these hold harmless grants and stuff that's on the land. So that's not reflected in, in our budget calculus. So this is just rate setting for the town.
Yeah, it really just affects the tax rate here in these towns.
Oftentimes, these numbers fluctuate a lot because of the grants that you get. Our budget goes up and down a lot.
Yeah, well, the total money of that budget, yeah.
So, you know, just, I, in an effort to sort of help make sure everybody can kind of understand, you know, where our budget's coming from is where the money is. They may see, our, our budget may look normal, but they may see next year a fairly significant increase in the tax. See, the tax rate because of the lack of these, that, is that a sign?
Especially for that, yeah.
Right.
Yeah.
Next year's and the next one.
Yeah. But you never know, there might be something else. This was just, yeah. Anyway, they did a pretty good job putting this together. If you sit down and read it and try to decipher it. Yeah, I don't know when, when you sit with the towns, if they mention any of this during tax rate setting.
Yeah.
You know, especially for Lincoln, who never gets a grant.
That's, that's why we didn't, we didn't use any of our outstanding cutouts off of the tax rate. We need to save that for next year.
Oh, okay.
We're going to need that to keep it level again. No, thank you for this. I, see, I find this interesting to do. Thank you.
I do want to set a point there. I can follow through, but if I start to figure it out.
I like how it, it ties into the town side.
Yeah.
Yeah, and you've got a whole month's payment in that grant. It's like, yes, I was excited about that. Thank you for that.
You're welcome. That's, that's all I have.
Okay, so I've mentioned quite a few things on my memo, and I didn't get to see your presentation so far. But what I do want to remind you of, that there is a succession clause in the packet. And that, remember, we have a succession policy going into second reading. And that's to brush the attention to the succession claim. This is the one that we do have. You know, and this would be your R policy. You know how your policy is ABC, and then there's another ABC R? This, the one that, that I'm showing, that I put in the packet is, would be your R because that could change, you know, within the, within the system. But the other one is on reading two, um, second reading for the board. So this is the one that we actually use.
I have one question. The far, very bottom line, if absence is longer, then what would move forward longer than what? I mean, there, there's no timeline to resolve. I mean, it's, because if it's, if it's unanticipated, I mean, if you know you're going in to have your permits out, but it'll be gone in three days, that's what they want. If it's unanticipated, then what is longer?
Longer would be something where you're the board who have to decide, you know, can we go with the, do we need to go with the interim? You know, and that would be up to the condition.
Of the conditions, okay.
Of the situation.
I read it on my plate.
Right, right. And the thing is, is what, what you would end up doing as a board is you would be contacting the University School Boards Association and for the, so they would guide you through.
Absolutely.
The process.
Thank you so much.
Uh, the rest of the information is, is within the agenda. And right now, I'm just going to recall your contractors that are going to be presenting tonight. I'm just going to be connected online, so I just want to let them know to get online, so.
Okay. And we will hear from you. November is practicing gratitude month, and so we're doing that in elementary and the Middle High School State. And, you know, I just want to let everybody know that I'm thankful for the opportunity to serve these two communities. Lincoln and Woodstock. You know, I've come across lots of really good people in the willingness to do marketing for students. So it's my little bit of gratitude for tonight. And we had a wonderful, that turns to a celebration. We got a chance to be there. It was excellent. I want to thank Joe Evans again for coming all the way from Alaska to do this. You know, I, you know, it's meaningful when people are that dedicated. We had other people come from Oregon and all around the state. So there's people coming in for it. So I thought it was awesome and it was a great outpouring generosity again from our staff and our students to help celebrate. It was excellent. We just recently had the band course event yesterday. We were able to go to that concert. It was very well attended and it's nice to have that normalcy back. The teachers and kids did a wonderful job. Um, we had teacher conferences, we have today. Things go pretty well. I, I haven't heard of anything, but I just want to convey a message to teachers and parents right now, given that they're listening. That, you know, if you haven't had an opportunity to see, leave with them, just reach out anytime. We can have these meeting times. So we have to test and make more arrangements. So we'll make sure that they're available, teachers are available and parents know that. Um, report cards are being distributed tomorrow. So look for them, the elementary school will be handing those out in paper. Everybody else will be here online via Alma. And if people don't have a copy, just get in touch with us. Let's see, I, I hope you read the newsletter, but they did, but the staff and Ken did a wonderful job putting these together with the information there. Lots of dates for you to look at, pictures, activities, things that we do. It looks awesome. We do have a solution in place, almost, almost a hundred percent for our high school science teacher. We managed to find somebody at the last minute. We're just first gathering up some references and making those calls. The other one is, is met with Dr. Dan, so we're almost, almost there. Let's see. And I'd like to say good luck to our high school Quiz Bowl team that are meeting this weekend. Is it Quiz Bowl? It's not Quiz Bowl, I have that name wrong.
Granite State.
Granite State, yeah. So I think we're doing that this weekend, we'll do a qualifying round. I think Quiz Bowl was back in the 20s or something like that. So yeah, that's kind of, oh, that's kind of where we're at. I think things are starting to go on really, really smoothly. We do have our hiccups, but we're busy. Teachers are busy, kids are busy, grades just finished. So we'll start a new season, both sports and academics in this week. So we're looking forward to the winter.
High school final, teacher? I didn't realize there was a short process.
Oh, we had somebody going on maternity.
Okay, that accepts, thank you. Okay. So, how do you set when I'm at the end?
Yeah, the question is coming out.
Thank you.
All right. And committee reports.
Uh, committee, we did have negotiations and, uh, I'm not sure what people.
We have to go down for the, for the, you could do that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And we did have policy, uh, today, too. Did you want to have your team?
Sure. Um, we've got several policies coming out for the first reading next evening. Which then almost finishes our policies. Yeah.
We've been working a couple of years straight.
Right. Exactly. Exactly, yes. But what after this, maybe we're.
Is twenty, approximately twenty policies left. And then you'll be starting reviewing policies like in the fall when they, after they've been addressed. And what does that mean?
Perfect. Yeah, that's good. And then we've set a whole, we've got quite a few that are going to be with girls, too, in the other policies. Up for the first reading next evening, and then there's a bunch on the second reading time. Do you want to go ahead with that?
Yeah, go ahead, but. It's a long one, okay.
Yeah, you want to do that first.
So we have Jim here and Keith tomorrow.
Okay, we're going to let them speak. Yeah, we got to just let him speak.
Oops, I accidentally muted him instead of.
You're muted, Jim. Jim, you're muted.
I asked to unmute him. I can't unmute him, I can only ask him to unmute.
Oh, he's unmuted.
How about now? Does that work now?
Yes.
Yes, thank you.
Okay.
Okay.
Yeah, the big things.
Okay.
Okay. Would you like to start, Jim?
Yes, first of all, I want to thank you for inviting Keith and I to the meeting this evening and have an opportunity to address everyone regarding the high school project. As you all may recall, we did a very similar project next door at the elementary school not too long ago. And we're using ESER-funded monies again to help improve the air quality and the performance and enhancement of the equipment within the high school currently.
Uh-uh, he froze.
It is on his end because no.
Equipment within this high school is a problem.
That's, that's whatever he's at. It's not.
Yeah, yeah, because no one else is frozen. Yeah. Jim is frozen. Keith, can you hear us?
I, I, I can hear Jim, but I, I apologize. I can hear Jim, but I couldn't hear anybody else.
How about now?
I can, I can see a lot. I can, I can see a lot of movement in Lynnwood.
Is everybody, is anybody else having a problem?
I can hear. I can hear.
He's not freezing.
Jim, I think, I think, Jim, I think you dropped off for a bit. I don't know if you can hear us right now, Jim?
Yeah, I can hear you fine, and I guess I just don't know where I got, I dropped the ball or got kicked off the meeting on.
You were explaining that we had already performed a similar project at the elementary school, and we're now going to do a high school with similar situations, and that's where you lost.
Okay. So the existing equipment that's in the school that we're proposing to replace is approximately 30 to 40 years old and on its last legs. And Mark can attest to all of the equipment failures and varying control or lack of controls he has within the school to operate the building functionally. The meat of this project, if you will, is going to be to gut the existing boiler room, which is centrally located due to additions since the original construction of the boiler room. There is currently a single boiler in there, which is firing on number two fuel oil, and we're proposing to install two smaller boilers to give you full redundancy and to also heat your hot water along with heat the existing hot water heating distribution system. So you'll, if you have an unfortunate instance where you lose a boiler, you're never going to be without a backup boiler to get you through a condition where the other one's getting replaced, not replaced, but repaired. You won't have to shut your school down, you'll be able to maintain temperature and keep the doors open. We're also replacing a number of unit ventilators in the existing science wing, if you will, and a new unit ventilator in the library area as well. We're going to increase ventilation in those rooms. And currently, I believe it's the math wing, which is off the vocational area, is that correct, Mark? Yes, it is. That has, is going to be receiving an energy recovery ventilator to provide ventilation air to that string of exterior classrooms in that wing. The middle school wing currently does not have ventilation to any of those classrooms either, and we are also proposing to install a new energy recovery ventilator on the roof to provide ventilation air to the students within that wing. We're also upgrading all the controls within the building, which can be integrated into the new controller that was installed in the elementary school. So everything will seem very seamless for Mark, and I'm not trying to make this all about Mark and having Mark have a nice building, but I'm certainly sure he can appreciate it, knowing with what he has for things to work with currently today. So we'll be upgrading ventilation within the building, improving air quality, which is better learning environment for the children, if you will, and giving more reliable equipment and controls that Mark can take care of remotely. He'll get notifications when there's alarms, issues, and it's going to make his life a little bit easier. So I guess I'll close on that. Keith, do you have anything else to offer?
No, I believe you captured everything that we have provided with the drawings. I didn't know if there was going to be any screen sharing with drawings if need be, but Mark has been intricate in this whole situation. He knows what the schools need, and I feel that we have provided the direction that we have been given.
I will say, these documents have not been put out to bid yet. We're awaiting a green light, if you will, from the school district that says, yes, we've read through your invitation to bid, the dates that you have on your invitation to bid as a mandatory walkthrough, questions and answers by, and a bid opening by. We, we have all that. Once we get confirmation on that, we can release the documents and the SAU can provide, putting them out to bid and advertising them and getting contractors to attend the walkthrough.
Yeah, it's in your blue folder.
And we did review that with the department of ed, because it's ESAR-funded and it has to have, this part does, plus the contract will eventually, but.
Now, this is 100% the entire building, locker rooms, everything, everything's getting ready done, Mark?
Yes. Well, there's a few exceptions that I may just want to make you aware, aware of, and that's the kitchen hood, the kitchen equipment. That all resides as is. We're not doing anything with any of the kitchen equipment in the cafeteria. We're providing a new air handling unit to serve the cafeteria or multipurpose room, as you call it. The existing gymnasium unit was replaced not that long ago, and that's remaining as is within the contract.
How much of the existing equipment is being projected to be reused?
I would say a percentage-wise, well, we're probably looking at, we're using all the existing infrastructure as far as piping goes, but we're replacing parts and pieces of the equipment. So I'd say you're looking at about 45% replacement. And if we're not replacing the equipment, we're giving it a go-through, if you will. We're, we're kicking the tires, we're changing filters within air handlers, we're verifying controls, we're giving them new control sequences, we're checking belts, we're, we're going through the units top to bottom, if you will.
Now, this will all be a one-control system, Mark, so that you don't have 10 different things, like your iWorks, trying to be one part of it, another control doing another part of it. Is this all going to be, you'll be able to control everything from one place?
Yes, and it's my understanding that it's going to be the same system as what's in the elementary, so we'll be able to not really combine it, but I'll be able to look at everything at once.
We're using the existing underground, all right, thanks.
Yes.
I have a question about the drawings. I was trying to look through and see sort of what the soap of the replacements and demolition and stuff in it. And I'm looking at MD 1.3. There's a, there's a drawing on the left, a floor plant piping demolition, and there's the piping demolition keynotes with all the numbers, but I don't see all those numbers reflected in the drawing. Am I missing something?
The, the piping keynotes, if you go to drawing MD 1.2, the drawing right up front of that starts all those keynotes.
1.2?
1.2, yes. And you'll see the drawing start go from 1 to 29.
But there's, so there's, on 1.2, there's 1 to 22. No, on 1 point, MD, sorry, 1.3, there's 1 to 22 on the piping demolition. And there, and like, those are different than the ones on 1.2. And I'm just not seeing all of the numbers from 1.3 piping demolition keynotes and drawing matching up.
I understand what you're saying, and I can take a look at that and see. And it could be due to the way we broke our plans out, and I can certainly look into that, but I understand your question and your concern. We, we just tried to make our notes such that when we broke them up, we wouldn't have to rewrite three sets of notes for each drawing, but I can look at that and see if we can make that a little more streamlined.
Okay, I'm, I'm just wondering, because there's things like number nine, existing indoor air handler unit, SAH 2.2, SAH 2.6, located high on existing messaging remain, but I don't see that piece of equipment marked on the actual plan picture above it.
Right, I understand, because those, the, it, it falls right below the break line of MD 1.3 and MD 1.1, so I can see your point, and we may have to, like I said, fine tune our notes a little bit, but that's a good point. Thanks for pointing that out, sir, and I'll take a look at that before we release any of our documents.
You can't go back and forth. Okay. These are not the same. You can't go back and forth. I'm just trying to figure out where, where all of this stuff is. Because this is what we're sending out, and we're saying you need to work on, number nine, and number nine's not anywhere on the actual drawing. Yes.
Yep, thank you, and we will look at that.
They're all different. And they all have their own number, they're all numbered the same, you know, like one or whatever, so each, each one on each of the drawings needs something different. And I, I didn't go through all of them and look at that specifically at all, and I just sort of got to a couple of them, wasn't able to find a number of them, so I just wanted to make sure that, you know, when we're, because I think this is what the, it's incorporated in the proposal, right, the request for bids, and so it's going to be incorporated as part of the contract.
Yes.
At least there's a reflection, so it'll work appropriately.
So duly noted, and we will review that. Thank you.
As far as the cafeteria goes, inside the kitchen, I didn't realize that wasn't being reworked. Are you figuring, because I know there was an adequate makeup air, so when they kicked on all the exhaust vents and they were sucking everything out of the multipurpose room and stuff. Is all that figured into the new units? Do you have any makeup air?
Yes, there's a kitchen hood makeup air unit that's associated with the kitchen hood, and that is being gone through. They're going to make sure that's fully operable. A kitchen, a kitchen makeup air is only, makes up 80% of the total exhaust air. It's never 100%, so there'll still be a little makeup air taken from various areas, but the cafeteria unit, from what I understand, never, or multipurpose room never operated correctly, so we're, we're going in with a brand-new unit there with a brand-new sequence.
Yes, you pretty much had to turn it on manually and off and babysit it every day, but I just wanted to make sure that you guys were taking care of that makeup air situation, because I know that was an issue before, because that unit never really worked in there, but if you're going through that, fine. Is it the expectation that essentially we're, when the project is completed, we have, you know, aside from some, we're using pipes and vents, that, you know, all the controls and everything is going to be essentially new?
That's the intent, because currently you have some pneumatics and you have some electric, electronic iWorks, but I've been told the iWorks don't even work, so the building will be a completely integrated system that is all direct digital, that is fed back to one head-end unit, if you will, yes.
Do you have a projected savings, energy savings calculation for the new system?
That was not part of our contract to provide any of that study, so no, we did not do that.
Do you, do you have a, just a sense of what we would be looking at? I guess, you know, we have the answer to the taxpayers. This is, this is, despite getting quite a bit of ESAR funds, it's also going to be a big ask from towns, and so, you know, obviously, one of the ways that, you know, you can get folks on board is by telling them how much, you know, we, we project the system to be able to save us over the long term. We don't have any sense of that, or is that, we would have to contact some additional services to come up with that number?
Yeah. May I speak?
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, one of the biggest concerns for the system is the fresh air in the building. COVID kind of brought all this out, you know, and we found that by, you know, testing different areas, the carbon dioxide levels were a little higher than what they should be, because when the building was originally built, we had bellows windows all through the building, and, you know, the air returns would pull air out of the, through the windows and in the classroom and heat it, I mean, it had fresh air. Well, now we've buttoned up the building, so we don't have all this fresh air coming in anymore. So the antiquated air handlers aren't handling what we need. So it's not so much a sense of saving energy, it's more of a sense of a healthier environment for the staff and the students.
Yeah, I certainly understand that. You know, we don't want to, it's point 22, we don't want to be putting in a system that is standard efficiency, it's the one that we put in in 1970, so, you know, efficiency is, I mean, it's a concern for me, certainly, and I, and I have to presume that there's a significant portion of the unit that's also concerned with efficiency, and, and so, I mean, I would, I'd hope that we have some sense of what that looks like. Is that not, I mean?
No, I don't think so.
Well, I guess, can we get, if, if it wasn't part of the, that wasn't part of the contract? You have a real one?
Projected energy saving? I don't, I don't really have a clue. But we can, I mean, we just wrote it down. I mean, we assumed that there's going to be some savings, because it's a more efficient system. The control system is fully integrated, I mean, we thought there'd be a lot, just like with this building. I mean, there was a lot of the same issues as far as, but I, I think we should be able to get some type of calculation on that. Yeah, yeah, we do, yeah.
Somewhere in the plans, I read that, that it sounded like the plan called for just sort of cutting the old pneumatic lines and abandoning them, does that mean just leaving them in the wall or in the ceiling?
Wherever they're inaccessible, we're having them snip the compressed air pneumatic lines, if you will, instead of trying to yard them out within a wall or cut a wall open, we're trying to minimize any kind of general construction that needs to be addressed. So if they can be removed above a ceiling, they'll certainly do that, but if it's within a wall cavity and things of that nature, we're trying to avoid any damage to general construction that doesn't need to happen. But if it's within a wall cavity and things of that nature, we're trying to avoid any damage to general construction that doesn't need to happen.
Yeah, but I have a question about the furnaces running the hot water over here long. Why would we not test the furnaces down in the summer like we proposed years ago and run some other kind of hot water? It's awful to run the furnaces with two little shanks.
I can answer that question. We have small electric heaters on the bathrooms and a small electric heater for the custodians to use. The boiler is shut down through the whole summer, John.
Okay, yeah, we're back to the original plan. Okay, thank you, Mark.
Do you have any questions for the assembly? When do we have to come up with a vote on whether we have to vote on tonight? Or do we have to have them done thoroughly yet?
We can cycle it with December 1, if that, if that is a good plan. To go out to bid?
Right.
My, my concern would be if we don't have plans that kind of reflect full search for could be problematic if we're having to come in and look and then put the bids together based on documents that are, are, are not completely complete. Is there, I mean, obviously, our objective is to try to get this to the voters, to put this, like this in the paper. And so things need to happen, because do you have any sense of how long you think it will take for companies to prepare their bids?
Well, currently, we had, on our invitation to bid, that Thursday, December 1st would be a walkthrough. Two weeks after that, questions are due, and then sealed bids are due three days after the questions are due, which was December 15th. So you have bids. So right now, we're giving them approximately two and a half weeks, two weeks.
This is Keith from Yeti, which we are seeing currently, that's an acceptable amount of time to get bids back from contractors.
So we, the, we need to have, if we're going to need additional funding, which we know we are, and we can find out if they have any type of estimate, I think there is an estimate on this project as it stands today. We're probably looking about half of the project we're going to need funded from the voter, or some other source besides the ESSER grant. So if, if we are going to go for bonding, we'd have to have a bond hearing by the end of January. So we'd have to know what those costs are before that bond hearing. So we could probably push this out a little bit more, we have a little bit more time, but.
That's a good question. Yeah, my question would be, sir, how long would it take you to make the modifications needed that the, the board chair was asking about? Because if those were back to you, you know, with the whole scope of work, the next amount of time that could, that could still fall within when the bond's supposed to be, or when the bid is supposed to be posted, right?
Well, one, I don't know what I'm actually reading this.
The 14th. You have a budget meeting the 7th and a regular meeting the 14th. I mean, you could always do something before the budget meeting. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
With all due respect, the only thing I'm taking away from this currently is to revise our keynotes and make sure they tie to the plans accordingly. And I can say with confidence that I can have these plans and keynotes tied together by the end of the week.
How would we come up with a seventh form of efficiency? Do we have to, is that a whole new study that they would have to do? Because I know we're adding stuff, they add fresh air and I mean, is that going to balance out, making more efficient, making less efficient, and I, I can't remember.
I think that's enough to say that we've gotten wild bit of progress.
That's really, yeah.
No, yeah, I agree. No, we're putting out a bid, we have, we have accepted that. And then, you know, we'll put it in the history of the school. I mean, I guess my my sense would be, I'd like to see the plans that are, that reflect all of the work. So that we have to know where, so that we can make sure that the documents that we gave to the you said by the end of the week, you think you can have that fixed?
That's, it's a tall order, but I'm going to say I can do that for the school board. I know nobody will look at it by over the weekend, so if you say no, don't push it that hard. Get it to us by the end of the day Monday, I can do that as well.
Well, I, it may not even be that big of a push. I mean, the only, I guess the only thing is we don't have a meeting coming up for a bit, and then it's the holiday week, so.
We want to do a quick meeting like that, so we haven't done very, very heavy meetings Tuesday. Try to block for the day from that.
But the purpose of the meeting is to be to approve
or go out to bid.
The plans and the, it's basically we're approving the invitations in, based on the
Just a couple things to keep in mind here, and everyone be mindful of it, is we're coming upon the holiday season where businesses close down for a little bit of time and things of that nature. So when you put this out to bid, you've got to keep that in mind, that you give contractors the allotted amount of time, knowing that there's going to be holidays within that period. That's what we were trying to do with our December timeframe, was make sure that people could get bids in prior to the holiday break, if you will.
Would, would you, would you think it would be fine if we moved, we had a meeting next week to approve the invitation to bid based on the plan revisions? And then just bump all these dates back a week?
Keith, can you, can you let me know what you think on that end, please?
What I feel is, what I'm getting out of it is the only comments that we don't, we need to address are on the demolition portion of the I-1, 2, and MD13. Is that correct?
To be fair, I, I didn't look with that much specificity on, at every single drawing. But I'm looking at MD1.3 and both of the drawings on that. You know, MD1.3 and the floor plan ductwork demolition only reflects number four and number 27. And there's one through 28, or one through 29. And so, you know, there's 27, you know, demolition keynotes that aren't reflected on the drawing. And so that's, that's what, you know, and I didn't look at every single one of them with that level of specificity, but I, you know, I think it would make sense to check that these, that the demolition keynotes are reflected on the drawings.
Right, so the
Maybe, maybe it is the same with the work, too. Like I said, I, you know, I didn't have time to go over all of the, each one of the, you know, the ductwork plan to make sure all those keynotes were present on the drawing.
Yes, sir, I understand. So some of those keynotes do not apply for that actual drawing, so out of 28 keynotes, only four apply on that drawing. It doesn't mean that they were missed on the drawing. It just means that they don't reflect that drawing.
So is there, is there a drawing that reflects the rest of the keynotes?
If you go to drawing MD12. MD12 is the ductwork plan demolition.
So it's the same?
So Keith, I can, I can go through these in short order and make the modifications needed.
So what, yeah, what it would entail would be just, just to go to the drawing, remove the keynotes that don't apply to that particular drawing.
It's still one, two under piping demolition keynotes. It's just only, say, five of them are existing to that. The keynotes is a, is a file you cut and paste. So 29, they're piping demolition, all keynotes are total one through 29. They focus on multiple pages, now that I've read through them all. So on this first page, if you go to piping keynotes, you can pick up the, the ones that are not on the other.
It's the way the plan's broken out, Keith, I can, I can clean it up.
So what, what a contractor will do was they'll highlight one in orange and two in pink and three in yellow, and then they'll go to each drawing. Even though that the actual keynote on the drawing doesn't reflect that drawing, they'll know that on drawing MD13 only has four keynotes, and that's how they'll bid it. They won't be looking for 28 drawings, so, but we, certainly, we can clean up the notes so that the actual keynotes that are reflected on each individual drawing will be shown.
Well, I guess what, not that we've explained it that way, I think I understand what you mean. It's basically that every keynote is on every drawing associated with, say, for instance, pipe demolition. Those boxes of keynotes are all the same for every drawing, even if they don't include it.
That's correct, sir.
As, as long as that's standard practice and, and the contractors are going to understand that, then I don't think you need to make any changes.
It is a standard practice, yes, sir.
Okay, all right, then, then I, then that was, yeah, that's all that's happened. But I don't know, so we need to just hold off on voting.
Okay.
Does anyone else have anything to say, John?
Why, did you say go with that?
I said go. I mean, I think it's just, if we had bigger
No, I can see.
No, it took me a while to put together that, I was reading both the keynotes for multiple big
That's our biggest paper.
I love it.
I came in early before the meeting, so I could read the one that you had.
So I, I, I think you go forward with it, it stays good and everything's good, everything's good. I think earlier this letter, we got more opportunity out there.
So I guess the question is, is everybody satisfied with, with the project as proposed? All right, then I understand motion to approve the invitation to bid based on the plans. Okay, good one. Thank you, Mark. All right, all those in favor, to the side of saying aye? Aye, opposed, sentenced, and that most appears. Thank you, John.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Thank you, James.
Um, yes. Can I just ask one quick question? If we stay to the dates that we have here, you receive bids on the 15th. When will this contract be awarded to, say, the successful mechanical contractor?
Well, we need to have a, we need to have a meeting, a logistic meeting.
Well, it's going to be contingent upon. We're going to put some wording in it that says it's contingent upon it passing in March, too.
So when do we meet after?
Around that time, which is probably like around that, probably the 14th.
And the only, the only reason I ask this question is because equipment lead times on some equipment, say, is six months for an energy recovery ventilator. If the contract is awarded in January, a contractor can get his submittals in order. The equipment can get ordered because you're trying to do this work within your summer break period, if you will. So if it's pushed out three months to March before it's awarded, I, I just want to make people aware that we can't be responsible for lead times on equipment and everything, and I just want to be transparent here and bring this to everyone's attention. So there's no surprises.
We're confined by, by what the voters vote in in March, and so we can select a contractor and sort of award them the contract contingent upon approval by the taxpayers. And so, you know, I don't think that we can sort of authorize anybody to start ordering equipment on their behalf until the voters have approved it in March.
Unfortunately, it's March.
But I mean, I guess that's not, that's a, not something that we have any control over. And so if that means that there's some delays in procurement of equipment, I mean, then we have to deal with that.
Now, what you're saying with, you, you mentioned a certain piece of equipment, you know, is, is, is being locked for like six months out. Is general HVAC equipment in this manner? And boilers kind of readily available or minimal lead times where if it had to be done, where it's just a you know, a specialized makeup condenser that, yet it would be held to not come in, but then to, you know, say it's coming in August or September, that it or is it a chance?
Well, I can give you an answer tonight, and it's going to be different tomorrow, and it's going to be different the next day. Unfortunately, the market is very fluid right now, and lead times are changing. We're going to be going into a new year, and some factories will be retooling. There's all kinds of variables here that I wish I had a crystal ball and could give you distinct answers. Unfortunately, I can't even run my own life, so don't ask me what I'm going to have for lunch tomorrow. So I just want to be clear with you and let you know that, you know, we're not trying to hide anything here. There's lead times on equipment, and do I think it's going to improve over time eventually, but not very soon in the near future?
Well, I mean, I don't think that affects our decision. You know, we go with this either way. It comes down to the fact that the equipment
However, if we approve this contract, if it fits the mandate, we award a contract to a company in January, December, January, whatever, contingent upon the March statistic meeting vote. And then they can't get the equipment, and it's November, no, and we don't have heat, that's going to be a shame.
And the other, the other tricky part, though, is the ESSER funds, too. So if you were to say, if we can't get this special piece of equipment, and we need to take the project down to next summer.
September 2024, September 20
are pieces that have that go to get it in time, like is there a way that we could authorize this?
I guess we have half, no, because we're taking half the project.
But I don't, I think that Yeah, I mean, if there's such chances, if you do that, then we just spend money and then it doesn't get voted on, and now we've just got a giant condenser, is that good? So, I mean, I think we just go forward with the way it is. Unfortunately, if, if in the middle of March, you know, the contractor's saying, hey, this is, this is what's going on, and we're not going to have the equipment till
December.
Till, whatever, till October or something, we just have to wait and have, but then everything will be lined up even better. In essence, you know, you'll have everything, everything up here, and you just, so long as the money's protected over that period, so.
No, that's, they're not going to want to wait that long, you know.
No, they're in contract.
Another option here I just want to present to you is you can do all the infrastructure within the school because you're waiting for a piece of equipment to land that's going to sit on your roof. You put your roof curve in You put your roof curve in early, you cap it over, you run all your ductwork, you run your power to the roof. So once the unit comes, it's just work that has to be done mostly on top of the roof. And you schedule it to, to, to make it work, but you get all the infrastructure done in your classroom areas where students are not in, in the school. I, I, I just want to throw that out to you and again, be transparent that this is an option as well. That you may go a month or two without a rooftop unit. But it's in the fall where you can use your operable windows for ventilation. But then when the unit gets there, it's just hopefully a small amount of work on the roof and some control wiring and integration into the front end.
So, long answer to your question, we plan on awarding a contract, hopefully, at our first meeting in January. Again, it's contingent upon timing vote, but that's the front end.
So we can have these. That's what he said, do we need them due December fifteenth or can it be pushed out a little bit more? But they're not going to do anything over Christmas anyway.
I, I still feel clear with that.
I'd say stay with that, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, it sounds like it's still okay.
I mean, they still do better, they're, they're still going to go and, and he's going to have to make sure that they're qualified. So that's going to take it to go and with the holidays, I think our first meeting in January is probably a couple of months away.
Okay, do you have any more questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, everyone.
Thank you, John. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Keith. Have a good night.
Have a good night.
Your own policy.
So, yeah, I think that's all we have right now.
Oh, great, we don't have to vote until second, the first one is set. Any questions with second meeting policy before we start?
One of the things that we could talk about was the necessity of this initiative, right? I see that it's here, is it, is it on our list? Is it something that we, I mean, I think you were going to question the necessity of it. And so is that something that we're planning to approve?
Yes, because anybody else knows this. I thought it was that you have to have one. We have to have one, we don't have to have a policy outline. However, you provided us where this technical plan is required and it's, everyone is required is in it and it's pretty minimal. Which, all right. So I'm good with that.
Fine with what?
Fine with the P D M S and I like that.
Hey, you are using the door.
We have to have this, whether we, whether we approve that policy or not, we have to have this. Yeah, we have that, we have that, and that's still out. We just, we're not a free policy, so we have to have it.
What's that?
C C A.
C C A is the, is the policy that we don't currently have, but we are hoping to adopt. This is our, this is the actual plan that's required by C C A that we already have, even though we didn't have a policy prior. I'm more comfortable with it, but it's just in C C A that we found that, nothing stuck out.
It does work, we can use it.
I make a motion to approve policies E B C L, E B C B, I C, I H P A S, I H P A D, I H P A C, I H P A F, J I C N, J J A dash R, four A, three A, C C M, C C D, P H P, D Z, D G B, D I H, D J U, and D J D. Thank you. Absolutely. I'll just add, I make.
Thanks, Jessica. Any further discussion of those policies? Hearing none, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Aye. Opposed? Sentenced? And not most of the cares, those amendments, I think. And next up? Know any recommendations, Jessica?
I don't have anyone that has a, a board action. I just wanted to notify the board of the coaches that will be coming up for the winter sports as well as notification of your, the name of the long-term sub for. She signed, I just saw that. Your winter coaches, your boys varsity basketball head coach is Matt Manning. Assistant coaches are Vance Pickering and Max Stovallak. Girls varsity basketball head coach is Dana Gaddman. Assistant coach is Brianna Fairbrother. Boys middle school basketball head coach is Jen Whitman. Girls middle school basketball head coach is Mandy Avery. Your high school ski team head coach is Karen Louts. Middle school ski team head coach is Marcus Corrigan. And ski team assistant coaches are Kim Pinkham, Jeff Clamott, and Keegan Lars.
Absolutely, that's a great combination right there.
Okay, sure. And also you have for your long-term sub, who will be subbing for Katie Parent, who is a high school chemistry teacher, as well as some other finance, other finance subjects, so two teachers. Emma Griffin will be coming in, in December and she will be working with Katie for the month of December. And then in January, she will be going to January Mitchell Gym.
You don't leave the official photo, and it's either because it's just a sub.
I know.
Because it's not, yeah.
Also, you do have to take action on the district clerk.
Oh, yes.
You did get a, a letter of interest from Sharon. If someone has to, you know, you have to make a motion to vote in. But also, a board member will have to swear her oath.
I make a motion to appoint Sharon Hope as the district clerk.
Thank you, Shannon, thanks, uh, any stuff on that? All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye. Thank you, Shannon, thank you.
Yeah, thank you. That's it?
Your last one?
Oh, yeah, that was, that was it for the.
Oh, that's it.
The, also, did we make a connection on that?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, okay. Oh, God, I'm embarrassed, I'm sorry. Well, I just kind of thought of that. I didn't see it in the new business, that's why I was, please.
Full portion of funding formula, so. I have, I have a long start to discussion. We have, um, we must represent it from that committee here.
And, and guys and women who should be able to.
And I guess we didn't get any more from the, from them, saying what their recognition was or.
See, there wasn't a follow-up in these, there was.
It's in the minutes, we put the minutes in the paper. Yeah, along with all the information of all the different formulas and.
I'm happy to speak, Kevin, I don't want to complain, if you want to speak.
You go first.
So we met several times, you'll see the minutes, I think, of the last two meetings, they're both all in this folder. Lots of awesome information provided by Deb, as always, also great information provided by Woodstock, like Cheryl Weirden. It was really interesting to see how this works as well, history provided by Deb, when the committee started and the different funding formulas that went through. We did have some good conversation. I really appreciate that both towns really seem to be on the same page of working together as a cooperative instead of only conversing Woodstock thing. Also prioritizing taxpayers as opposed to, again, looking at town versus town. We did have some good productive conversation, like I said, but I think everybody on the committee would agree that the last meeting, we were still sort of at an impasse. And because of that, I think things started to kind of unravel. You'll see from the minutes of the last meeting that it was a twelve-minute meeting, so it was very quick. A motion was made, the I abstained from, as did another committee member. So again, kind of lack of discussion, discussion, quick motion of things, a, a quick motion, a quick vote. So my abstention, the abstentions ultimately led to the motion passing, which was not my personal intention. Again, because I felt there was more discussion that needed to happen. So my suggestion to the board is that we don't move forward with the disaffirmation right now. I wasn't very comfortable with how the last meeting ended, but like I said, it was a twelve-minute meeting and kind of it took the life of its own there at the end. So that's my suggestion, that we don't move forward at this time, but, and we don't bring that right immediately to the voters. Kind of, can I make some suggestions to the program there, John?
Like Jasmine said, I think there's a lot of analysis and consideration of not only what, you see, these papers, these, I'm sure, that we put together for the whole nine problem. It was a good analysis of different options, right? What, what are our options? How would this affect a town or a family in Woodstock, a family in the rioting situation? There, we also looked through, you know, other cooperative districts throughout the state and made assessments. Considering Woodstock like any other situation, we are, as it may say, we're kind of a unicorn. And there's no, there's no other town or other, you know, formula for other school district that is going to, is going to fit our situation. So I was, the way that I approached it or looked at it, and I think many other departments do to them, looking at a more equitable, per household position for cost to fit, if the, if the intent was to make it even for families in Woodstock and families in, in Lincoln. The proposal that passed at the last meeting is the most equitable, I would say.
Would you recommend us taking action on this, Stephen?
I would recommend, I don't know, I want to make sure that everyone on the board has enough, has, one, looked at the information enough. Two, has made considerations, asked questions, and has given the chance to do that. Personally, I think tonight is too quick for the board to make a decision. I know Jasmine, myself, as well as Pam, we're involved in all the meetings. I would, I would rather see the rest of the board take time to digest this information and make a decision at a next meeting. I don't know what, what's the time for that. And I'd like to say that Deb and Judy were bringing assets to, to this process of providing information after information responded to every difference that we had.
Information that Deb gives is always amazing, but I'm just, for that, yeah. Thank you for that. I just want to say thank you to Cheryl, too, she did the spreadsheets, she worked in Excel master. I, some, this is super helpful for me. And thank you to Mr. Baker for, for involving me, because it's been great to help us out, guys, we truly.
As, as we're looking at this sheet with the, all the different colors, I think Cheryl may be able, I'm going to walk through this, but she might be able to, it will say a little bit differently, but how she, if you're looking at the sheet, you have family home versus family home for anything in Woodstock. She chose different households in both towns that were similar. Makeup?
Evaluation.
Evaluation.
So family four.
Right. And then same with number one, number two, and number three, so she took different. Cheryl, can you elaborate on number one, number two, and number three?
Yeah, so number one would then, a couple, a hundred white individuals. Number two's with a comparison of family four and family four. And then number three, with a comparison of, again, a older woman. Put them in white. Imagine what they'd do in the best way.
No, no.
But, yeah, just to kind of keep it in comparison so that you will look at, you can tap on those family tools in the, in your technical lifestyles, okay?
So on, on that question, like number one, it looks like pre thirteen and we can, and pre forty six, eight, nine, and Woodstock. I mean, is that like a three-bedroomed two-bedroom house downtown? What's that reflect?
Both are not downtown, both would be off beside roads. The one is probably, one is two stories versus one story. So probably a couple of tribed roads to protect it, not far as somebody would. The family, I mean, the family usually in Lincoln is probably higher. You can have the exception house. It's warm on or anything, anybody, you can live, it's definitely not higher than Hollywood.
Well, I guess that's what I'm saying now, was like, what's, where is that reflected right now? Is that?
As far as the house size?
Well, yeah.
I think the most comparable one that you're doing that, that one's going to be the, pretty close to the same number bedroom, same number bath. One is, both of them are on major, major loop, it's three for one, and we, one room is back to the other, right on the road. Both are, two working parents, two kids in the school, roughly about seven rooms. So that, that, that top one is the most comparable out of all of them.
Yeah, one of, one of the things that we look at out of state membership, over the last ten years. It hasn't changed much.
I mean, it's not all that more, but I say more, it's not, it's not, there's not a huge difference.
Pretty close to fifty fifty.
Exactly, it's so close.
And there, there was discussion around, you know, both housing, you know, like. Future housing developments in both towns, but ultimately, you got to work with the things that are happening on this. You know, the plan for this is to be evaluated every five years. And will those housing developments change? Maybe. But we can't, we can't speculate based on that. Maybe, but we can't, we can't speculate based on that.
Well, there are a couple that we mentioned, but we know, I mean, there's one, we've got to process people that we know, and it's like, you know, the actual, it's not speculation, it's there. But again, there's a potential soon, so, yeah. But there are some that are speculative, so.
It's just like what they, you're asserting, do that. Yeah, so number nine is what tax?
The rate is 65/35, 65, one's on 35%.
It's number one. Funding formula is number one. To split based on no factors, just a set split.
Right.
Number nine proposes to bring in two factors, one A B M, one equalized property valuation, weighted at 30% for the A B M and 70% for the property valuation. So, yeah, so what that?
Here's what I'm saying, if, 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 ours is, it's a better, it'd be the improvement, but like, the assessed value, say, in Lincoln, is growing substantially, Woodstock's starting to grow, and starting to, and I may be wrong, but starting to fill in that blank where everything's starting to just grow exponentially. So is this, what is it, every five years?
Five years, not more than five years.
The formula cannot be changed.
Yeah.
For at least five years. So this district, this, the board, at one point said, let's not, so we can only review the formula?
Yeah.
We can only review the formula every five years.
But then we just forgot about it.
Doesn't have to change every five years, but it can change.
We don't need to every five years, it's not a big deal, it's so much.
No, I understand that. What I'm saying is, right now, we're at like, and I think, everybody is, it is my opinion that we're at like a precipice of this valuation changing dramatically in these two towns over the next five years. So, I mean, I think, whatever is done, it really needs to not be, it needs to be brought back, that immediately once we get to that time.
And I think that was one of the main reasons why I abstained, because 70% on equal, equal valuation. I am all for, like I said before, I like the approach of this committee, that we were not town versus town, that we were working together, that we identified that this is a cooperative district, and that it should be applicable for a single family and a separate family. However, the motion that was made may be uncomfortable, that I'm all for moving more in that direction, we've been making it more equitable, but that was the piece that I was a little bit more comfortable with, just because of those, of those things. But again, every five years, we can look at it.
If we bring this to the voters this year and it does change, we can't be, we can do anything for five years. If we don't bring this to the voters and we don't change it, we could bring it again next year, or the following year, or the following year. This locks us in, right?
That's, I guess, one of the reasons.
Yeah, and if stuff is changing, it is, and it's, I mean, it's a pretty huge factor in this. You know, one's almost done, one's looking close, but the one I'm measuring is just all done. Better go on the backswing, like, boom. Then we've got the big one across the road, and then we've got another one going up the porch, it's, it's almost another turn each time. But, I mean, you've got pretty few, I mean, structures still going to be on the backswing. It's going to affect it. I, I appreciate until more of that is done, and we know. There's also, like, second houses on the construction up on South Mountain. It's, you know, that's something, there's a lot, there's several projects in Woodstock that I haven't heard of yet.
And there will always be, you know, we think it will never be at a time where we're like, oh, there's nothing going on, like, you know.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with that, it will always be, right now, we're on task to build 700 units on South Mountain.
Right.
Another 40 homes.
Right.
Three hotels, like, we're just on task right now, we're at like, it's a big point in, in Lincoln, and then it's filling and over, and the same thing's starting to happen on Woodstock. I think like, I just feel like right now is like the time where it is like 80s development going on, you know? And it's, and that's, that's one thing I'm like concerned about, is that it's not like 15 years ago, we're like, oh, we're building, do this, or do that, and then all of a sudden, now it's like, I mean, we're building construction companies from all over New England, and it's just going and going, so I don't, I'm just, and I don't understand it as much as everybody else does, I, that's the part that I understand, that there's a lot going on.
I would be in favor, leaving it as this is not voting, we can keep the voters at this time.
Can I ask a question, Cheryl? I'm not putting you on the spot. It looks like for the 300,000, roughly, the 300,000 assessed homes, current taxes paid, is that school taxes?
Yes, that's school taxes, one.
So if it were changed from the current funding formula to the proposed funding formula, it only goes up, it goes up less than $100 for that 300,000 a home?
True.
And it, and it goes down by a little over $400 to Woodstock?
True. What is the dollar amount under the assessment? That is the local. Right, right. So you've got your local school, your state school, that's your, this is the town.
That's the, I think that's the first.
No, that was just school taxes.
It's our town, how to sign to the.
Oh, exactly.
So, so it's not, it's not an overwhelming, I guess, it doesn't look like, even.
Right, even, even with the adoption, for Woodstock, it's still, that individual, that family in Woodstock, which, which still pays the 784 dollars more a year than that same that makes a home. I mean, I completely understand the value, the whole, but when you add, when you add valuation, plus it's been taxed, it's also going to reduce the individual tax, it should reduce the individual tax payers, because it's been spread out across more, correct? And as long as the school budget, if you guys do so well at maintaining that school budget, within, you know, as you see, it should, it should not hit individual orders.
Do you know what Woodstock's equalization rate is right now? When was your last total readout? That's, it'll be up to next year.
Done about three and a half times.
Yeah.
Lincoln's done about three and a half times.
You've got that grant for the reduction of state tax, that R equals one month payment, Lincoln did one month payment, Woodstock is about two a year, so the disparity in all that, it's just, it's a gravity, because that's a taxation impact.
More of this thing? More of this thing?
High taxes, yes, that they pay less in.
Total, yeah, the total taxes in Lincoln.
They normally get grant funding, and then they don't, they raise, I mean, they spend more, I think they raise them.
Does this, does this sort of factor in, the, the rate setting, you know, so when Woodstock gets their, like, $400,000 from the state?
No, this is just our budget. It has nothing to do with this, that's a state education tax formula. No, that has nothing to do with this. This is just, how is our budget, our budget less any other revenues that don't come from town? How is that, of course, about?
I'm just, we're here, like, in tax impact, right, so, you know, we can, we know what the split's going to be, and then, you know, Lincoln's paying all of it because we don't get any of this, Woodstock's paying some of it because they get a big chunk.
Well, they're still getting their split, but then Woodstock happens to get some funding to state education.
Well, that's what I'm saying, like, so, so the tax impact isn't, isn't like, you know, what, I think it's clear, right, it's, it's the 35%, right now, it's 35% of the budget minus whatever that big chunk.
Well, yeah, I mean, and that's what they pay, but.
Can we have any sense of what that means?
I mean, I don't think we can really pull that into this discussion.
And if they're getting 10%, of what they have to pay is maybe 5% or whatever, then they're only paying 25% of it, which still are paying 60%.
Yeah, I don't think it's that big, but.
No, but.
I'm just saying, especially centered around some household impacts, right? And if you look back at the, the money that Woodstock's gaining from the state that Lincoln is in, that, that has some impact on the household, or whatever.
That can change at any time.
Right, right.
It's a business, right?
It could be less.
So, what you was, you was telling me was, the state line education company.
Normally, Woodstock gets about 300,000 in the education grant, and Lincoln doesn't get anything.
And their, you know, apportionment of the, is like, less than 3 million, so it's about, so they get about 10% of their amount compensated by the state. That's a fair assumption.
Right.
So do we have any sense of what that, how that impacts the, you know, the household contribution, for example, towards the school? Whatever this would be, you know, so this would be reduced by, let's say if it's 2,500 now, on example one, it's actually probably closer to 2,250, if we're reducing it by 10% based on.
Yeah, I mean, Woodstock would end up paying more if they didn't get that money from the state.
But don't those numbers, because they're used to your, the formula, your body part that brought in the financial aid from the states. If you remember when we built that formula, so that.
Yeah, yeah, that state education piece, yeah.
Right, we built that in, so that, the $2, $2.56 per thousand.
Yeah, because that was the state education tax rate.
Brought in all of the work, but for Woodstock, you mean, that $4.96.
So actually, that probably.
That's the actual impact rate.
Yeah, yeah.
The 2.85 is the actual impact rate, so that's, that's.
So you're saying that's already in?
Yeah.
Oh.
Yeah. That's Lincoln's, the valuation Woodstock's, Lincoln's, they're supposed to pay instead of taxes, so Woodstock gives them that, so.
So the 542,000, 448 is what's raised by Texas, in Woodstock?
Correct, and then they got that, the 300,000, is that, this is, what was that second in the?
Which one are we looking at?
I think it was the town, that's, that's not the school, it was the town, yeah?
It actually comes to the school, and we reduce their bills by that amount.
Exactly.
Which one are you looking at?
Well, it's on, she has her reason.
I'm looking at that.
Yeah, it's on this one.
Oh, federal force reserve.
Federal force.
Because those are town-specific revenues, so you have to adjust that, that money.
So, I think, I don't think that that was just on this amount, because it's total here. So I don't, I don't think that was sitting in the account. The total here, that's the total of the two's, and those are the, like, the one that. This is a fact that I have come up with, and thought some of the committee.
This is a, this is a, okay, so I, I'm here to support you guys.
Yeah.
Or, 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 or,[1794.81]
Can I just make one observation? So with the current formula, it's a, it's a set split. With any of the other formulas that bring in ADM or valuation, especially, well, so when you look at, if seventy percent of the formula is based on valuation and one of the towns is growing a lot more than the other, that, that's gonna, right now, that just happens to work out that it's sixty-nine percent, thirty percent of the budget. But as that valuation of one of the towns increases and seventy percent of that formula is based on that valuation, it could go higher.
So, as an example, did it finish up these two hotels, they add an extra hundred million dollars to the tax base? You, that's what you're talking about, that, that could mean that that.
The weight of that factor could go even higher. And it's still seventy percent of that factor, but that, that, based off of a bigger number. I mean, the other, the other town's growing too, but.
Like, very, that more on the, in the tax.
Right.
So it's for us, it would be just.
Well, yeah, yeah. Right, that, that too, so that goes, and back to that household. Yeah, yeah, so that's just, yeah.
You're saying, run through that hypothetical, like, if one person goes to one point two billion or one point five billion, and Woodstock goes to four hundred million, you know, run them through. And certainly, it's looking very lion, for example, the volunteer.
That's a good exercise.
No, we did actually start to kind of see, and that could, that could help.
Yeah, all I was just saying is it's not locked in at sixty-five thirty-five, so it could actually.
Right, and that was my piece too, is that I was all for moving it more equitable, but the, the one that passed is not necessarily one that is comfortable, moving to a, a, a loss percentage that we made it a little bit more equitable, or something like, be more comfortable. But yeah, I think that that's a great idea.
Can we use the variable formula of the board?
Yeah, for years it was based on fifty percent ADM, fifty percent valuation.
That's what it was for the longest.
And so it ended up, again, these numbers show, it ended up being about a sixty-three percent, fifty-three point seven percent split of the budget and thirty-six point three percent, and then you can see the household impacts of that.
Maybe reading forward on some of those, is the information that you received from you?
I have it, if you don't, but.
Yeah, we put a lot in your packet.
Oh, you did, oh, you put that in there, okay.
Oh, the other data, yeah, the years of data.
Yeah, I told you, like, what it was in the past.
Yeah.
What it turned out to be, yeah.
Hold the map, yeah.
So it's only been, it's only been. Nineteen eighty, two thousand fourteen.
From eighty-eight till two thousand fourteen, right, is sixty-three eighty-four.
Yeah.
I mean, you might be hoping to do this one for us.
There's a lot of numbers. Slice and dice and make beautiful colors and.
And Cheryl, I mean, I know some of you have done quite a bit of work on this earlier.
Yeah.
I know I would appreciate it. Maybe more workforce.
Yeah, well, yes.
Hey, you know what, this is a little wood school, that counts. Absolutely. You know, something I pointed out at the beginning is that I absolutely love it. You walk into that school without a bucket, and who you ask, none of those kids know or care who's in, who's in Woodstock. They don't live at school, and I love that. And it hasn't always been that way.
So can I, can we, can we, is there any issue, I guess, sort of.
Thank you, Rich, thank you, Cheryl.
Yes, thank you all for participating.
No, I'm gonna keep watching that YouTube video of Cheryl, but I just don't, I don't be able to do what you do ahead of time.
All right.
Continuing business in that side, there's a public gift donation.
Is that the only thing? So we either vote or set the definition of the, the.
What is to be, um, the matter? The gift is a eight hundred dollar call. I will make the most of it, except the telescope and the Rams with gratitude.
Thank you, thank you, Brian. Any further discussion on that?
Really, I did have this, you said it's in the perfect position, is there a maintenance, is there a calibration? I know nothing about.
No, but that's how it's called.
Is this gonna give them a budget item? This is later.
Should be.
Should be, eligible?
Oh, yeah, he's there.
Just possibly having to say that in the beginning, and just talking about it, I mean, there's that last night, that Mike might be stuck, I, with the school, so. I have a go-through telescope and usually when the electronics go on, that's it, there's no repair to them. Both of mine have gone out, so I usually just, I pump, I use the, I think I've done. But in theory, you should be able to align it on Polaris and one other star and then they go find the Orion, and it will jump, like, in theory. So it's simple accounts every day, and they're like, say, in sky, it's on.
Thank you.
So maintenance, we have any maintenance costs in the.
Thank you. I just, I don't know anything about it, I just didn't want to get into it, can't remember something, because I just don't know.
All right, you have a second on that? Paul, your favorite, say five seconds, and I. Post, and sentence, and.
The folks should send, can I say thank you?
Send a, 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 it was.
Oh, presented by the Vax, that's it, okay, thank you.
I don't see any students, so I can, and, so.
I would like to thank Cheryl. The English apartment rotary speech topic has changed this year through the diversity of equity and inclusion, who will always give teachers an integral process, but the thing continues, really, I think, the conversation will evolve, right? And the first, top quarters will keep the rotary meeting at seven AM on Sunday at seven six. And then as also closely out loud, we'll send this to data, and that is only the main directory of the presentation. Thank you, Cheryl, thank you for listening, still, even if it's all loud and for all community and school judges, and lastly, thanks for being with the NDA, public speaking.
And that's just where I like it, and if you establish a point of view that the really full of taxes, then the topic, speech topic, people, you know, do the same speech story as alone, so she really likes it that they change their, like, topic for sure, so now they're forced, the seniors are writing the homeless speeches here.
And communities, Mr. Dan, I have a couple of things I haven't been in in a while, but it stayed away. Can you explain to me why the mats aren't being used in the district? We paid all that money for them to protect our very, very, very expensive floor and they're not being utilized. So mats, mat, the floors, we, when we were on the board, we bought floor cover because that dream floor is so expensive, we spent a lot of money on it to protect the scratches from the chair. It seems like that's all been ignored in the last four or five, twelve, thirteen, fifteen. We need new mats, we need labor to roll them, I mean, me and a few others in town have been talking about it. Come on, come through my garage, and I'm bringing it to you. Can you please give me an answer to that? Looking the why that I'm utilizing, we paid a lot of money for them to protect that floor, it was cracked, you, I saw drinks in there, I saw all kinds of things last night, and beautiful performance.
Fantastic.
Music, yeah. The other thing, comment was from somebody, was today was the first day, snow day at school, didn't see any clean of any sidewalk, side, you know, brushing of the snow, anything like that, and make sure that's able to address when the snow does come and stay, but it seemed like it would have been nice to have that taken care of, walking to school.
And you would have never agreed with that, however.
Yeah.
Do you know, did it slip up?
Yes.
The lights on the school path are back on, because they haven't been on for a few for my house, they haven't been on for a while.
No, one of them was not on, the other one was, but I emailed, I'm like, I don't want to, but you can wait next time. But should be good for us, since we're not the.
My only other concerns about this whole funding thing.
Backs it in.
Okay, I'll wait to bring it up next week. As a taxpayer, written, and do not.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tom. And I think that we do not need non-collaborating, because everybody's on me.
But just for a quick update on negotiations.
I'm looking carpet on this, we did talk about doing calls, and I know it's late, and I don't think it's need to be called, but I think we could talk about them, maybe on next week. Come on, let me take five minutes.
I have a question, you left something in the packet.
Just examples.
Okay, did they address? No, they didn't.